Change order uses unit prices that were given by, sorry, R and R excavation that were bid. So total change order cost would increase contract to five thousand, five, five thousand six hundred dollars and give five cents. Once again, MNDOT would bear these costs, no additional costs to the city for this change. We spoke with contractor about it already. And with that, can I answer any questions council may have, but we look for authorization or approval of the change order?
The additional cost, is that because of this group that had no?
No.
That they gotta redo that?
No, it's so the, what's shown in the plans currently, the driveway aprons matched the current aprons for the current driveway widths. So that's what we had shown in the plans. MNDOT wants to standardize them wide now, so if your current driveway is 10 foot wide at the right away, they want to make your apron 24 feet wide. So that would involve more concrete for the apron, that's where footage is the increased cost.
Yeah, but now, Cor- Cody was out the other day and he said mine would be 27 and then narrow down to 24. And then I have to fill out that form.
So how MNDOT measures driveway widths, they measure them at the right away. Standard driveway width for the aprons would be 24 feet there. Your driveway at the right away width, or the right away line, currently is about 12 feet long, 12 feet wide.
Yeah, again, the driveway, but not, not all done, where you turn off.
Not at where you turn off. That would be, all be 24. So if you were to take-
So is it 24 will be at the turnoff too, probably against the curb?
Yes.
That is what I was told the other day. Then the neighbors get what, 41, 40 feet wide?
Your neighbor to the north has sent a form to MNDOT requesting wider driveway for farm equipment. And MNDOT authorized that.
Okay, so I need to do that too then, because I farm too.
If you want a wider driveway. So-
But I would've, I would've went along with, with Cody, is that his name?
Cody.
Cody, I would've went along with that, he said he'd make it 27 there and then just narrow it to 24. So at least I could have the semis and trucks turn off without going over the curb.
Do you want to cover this afterwards, or you want to?
Well, we could cover this and then before we approve that, right?
Okay, we can cover that, so let me draw a sketch. So your current, the two minutes before driveway, sorry, before the project, edge of pavement was out here. Your driveway tied in like this. So this from here, here was about 27 feet. Okay? And then up here, this is about 12 feet. So with this, this current line, the edge of pavement is actually getting shoved out here, four feet wide. There's going to be curb and gutter here. You got curb and gutter here. So this width, or the new curb and gutter is going to be, this is only about, I'm going to guess, it's less than 27, because this is way out here now. If we're looking north, this width. Now the edge of pavement shoved out four feet further this way. Your driveway width, this four foot line is shorter than 27. So this is going to be the road. New curb and gutter is going to be here, but this apron is going to be 24 feet long. Or it sits over your current driveway.
Now if that's 24 and this is 27, it looks like that's wider than the 27.
Well, it's, I just drew it on paper. So off this 24 foot flat bottom, you're going to have three foot tapers.
You and I talked about that, oh, and you said the drivers would be the same.
Sean, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yep.
So what you're asking for here really has nothing to do with this right now. We have to get this approved, and this is something that you could discuss with Councilmember Johnson on later date. I think we need to move on because we do have guests here. So if you would like to set up a meeting with him at a later date to discuss that, then we'll just approve this, if the rest of the council is okay with that. And then, we do have the form here for you, for Mayor Otto to sign if it's approved. And then I'll show, hand that to you so you can take it with you.
Okay.
Okay, does that work for you?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Go ahead, did you have more?
I was just going to say if any other questions.
I'll make a motion to approve Trunk Highway 25 project change order number one.
Second?
All right, Kirby?
Yes.
How about I?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion passes four, oh, and one.
I'm sorry, thank you Mayor.
Tom?
Okay, and then, um, do you just want a quick event update, please?
Yes, so I sent an email this morning to recap last week, what all had transpired. The contractor had planned to pour curb and gutter on Friday. We discussed the schedule with them on Tuesday last week. Basically, what steps they had to complete beforehand, construction ended to be included. Included drain tile, install completed, they had to get the, the aggregate base installed, tolerance compacted and tested. We highly encouraged them to do a test roll, which is basically a bearing capacity test of your Class V and your, your subgrade below it, before curb got placed. And the fear is, is if we don't do that, we place a curb and gutter, and your, your aggregate base isn't placed compacted suitably, that afterwards, you're going to have, the curb and gutter is going to be put all over the place. So this is a quality assurance, quality control test. Tuesday, we discussed the plan. Wednesday, contractor was not on site. Thursday, they came up to site, finished the drain stuff, drain tiles installed. Also brought the Class V up to grade. Asked if they're going to do a test roll that day, they said they couldn't, didn't have a truck there. Called them Friday morning, 7:30. Asked again, can you guys come up and test roll this thing, we're kind of concerned about this one, make sure it's good. They said there's no possible way we can get out there. I'm sorry. So, we called our geotech testing firm, Hongo. Had them come out and do what's called a DCP test, it's a dynamic cone penetrometer test. So it's a test that tests bearing capacity, but it's very spot specific. And it's supposed to be random. The test roll, in my opinion, is more of a, overall, you can really see the entire thing. With the DCP, it's about that big, you go and drop a 10 pound weight and see how far this thing sinks into the Class V. We took five random tests, they all failed. The concrete foreman, who was a subcontractor to R and R, came to witness the test, and they pulled off site. Basically, it wasn't ready for them. So, we had conversations with the general contractor, they were upset, explained what happened. And basically, the concrete sub said, we can't warranty this on this Class V, so we're out of here. So this morning, we met on site, came up with a plan to correct it with R and R. We test rolled the whole thing, identified the failing areas, they worked it. We had to go back and re-stake the entire thing, because all the stakes got pulled out. And they're, right now, they're, pending that, corrections that they did today, they're tentatively placing curb tomorrow. They're waiting to get us headed from their, their concrete sub, but that's, that's basically what transpired last week, so. We have their contractor going door to door to the property owners along the project, working out, when curb was coming last week, what driveways they were going to do, and so they can set up parking arrangements. Understand that's obviously out the window now, but they're going to have to go through and do that again this week.
So when they worked it and they retested again, Sean?
Yep.
Okay.
So if it, excuse me, if it's not ready at that point, how late are they willing to pour out there? Because that's usually the thing they run into this time of year, is that people aren't going to, they're not even pouring, and once it starts getting colder like this.
It's tougher. You can pour curb and gutter below freezing temps, you have to protect it at night. If it gets below freezing, MNDOT has guidance on temps below freezing and what you have to do. I think it's two to three degrees below, you got to do one sheet of poly, three to five, you do two. And after that, it's basically straw or the top. But it's, it's additional work for them, and it's, you know, warranty concern that they have to incur. Same thing goes with paving, so.
When is this scheduled for paving?
They had it scheduled for Wednesday this week. If curb would've got poured last week, but obviously that doesn't happen anymore. Been talking to their contractor today, so if we get curb picked, placed tomorrow, tentatively started, they'd probably be looking at it next week. So temps are another thing for paving too, typically you want to see 32 degrees and rising. And what you have to do is test the, the temperature of the mix once it's placed out of the back of the paver. And then they got to get their test used right away. That's kind of the critical thing there.
Worst case scenario, if they don't get the curb and gutter down, then are they going to throw down just a layer of pavement for the winter time, or?
If worst case scenario, if curb doesn't go down, we'd have to come up with some sort of plan with the contractor to temporarily make this thing, make Trunk Highway 25 passable, save you all the winter.
Same, MNDOT won't let it go.
Right, right. It's, there's measures that got to be taken. And that is a good segue into a letter I got, or request I got from R and R on Friday, asking for an extension of the contract. I'm asked for clarification for this. The letter basically sounds like they just want to, an extension of the trail work. Like I said, ask for clarification exactly what items they're asking for. There's certain steps they have to go through, MNDOT contract in order to get approval. I have not responded to them, just basically that I was going to consider it and bring it to council, pending updates or answers on these questions I outlined. I haven't received their response to those. But-
They just kind of want to wait till next year finishes?
Sounds like, from their letter, it's just the trail paving. Everything related to the trunk highway, it sounds like they want to get done this year.
Yep.
Concrete basically out, including the aprons. What I'm hearing from the guys in the field is that their, the mixed plant that they get in the mixed room, they're worried it's going to shut down before they get to the paving and the trail. So, in my mind, it'd be, they'd get everything shaped for the, the trail placement, and probably to stabilize it throughout the winters, their, their goal. And then come spring, get that, basically the, the Class V in, the trail paved, and then everything restored and receded. But there are other plans that are open until, I know a few plans that stay open until the week before Thanksgiving, so that may not be, you know, they may have other options to get fixed. Instead of just the one plan, they're using a, a knife river to do their paving out here.
So then November 12 meeting, you'll probably have something?
I would, yes, I would anticipate something in that one.
Just so you know, we meet on Tuesday, November 12.
Correct, yeah, Veterans Day.
If there's, if there's something new that comes up before that, are we, do we need to schedule like a special meeting type of thing for that, to get it approved, if they need something like right away?
Yeah.
We can if you do.
Okay, if I get a response back, when I get a response back from them, I might just send it out to the council, just a follow-up email, this is the, this is exactly what they're looking for, and then maybe we can determine if we want a meeting out for that.
Okay.
If that works.
After this week, though, it's going to be below freezing every day, don't understand if that's going to affect the company.
If you get-
It's going to be like 24, 25, 32, 34 for I, I think the deal is about 35.
After you get through your initial curing days, I mean, that's, that's the big thing. But you'd want to have your, your protection on there the whole time while it's curing. Basically, up until they start getting ready to pave the pavement.
Need a question, Sean?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then if you and Councilmember Johnson just want to set up a meeting.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, sorry I was late.
All right, my presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys so much for letting us be here.
Yeah.
I'm going to move over there.
Don't you kill white behind you, Joe? There you go.
Formerly want to introduce myself, I'm Joe Kramer, I'm with the International Union of Operating Engineers. I'm a special pipeline rep for the international. I've been a member of Local 49 for 34 years. Couple years ago, they offered me this job at the international level. And part of my duties is to monitor and help pipeline projects along. And that's kind of how this here Respect Minnesota developed. Aaron, if you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Aaron Burns, I work with a public affairs company, and we've been working with the trades to help develop Respect Minnesota. And we've been going to communities, talking to city councils, chambers of commerce, people at local coffee shops, really anyone that'll listen to us at this point, but talking about Respect Minnesota and introducing ourselves out there, so.
So how it, how it started was with the four trades that are involved with pipeline projects. And, you know, on controversial projects, you know, things can get heated out there. And we just wanted to say, how can we change the narrative and make it a safe environment for our members to be out there working? And this is kind of what we came up with. And so last year, what we did was, back around March, February, March, we started going to the meetings. And we met with all the members from, starting up in Bagley, and introducing this to them, and getting their feedback on it, what, what, what we can do with coming up with a pledge. So we spent a better part of, I think, three months doing that. And then now our second phase is to go back to communities like yourself here, and talking with the city leaders, chambers, and showing them how they can roll it out in their communities. Because this here Respect project doesn't have to be just two pipeline. This can be with any project, you know, if there's any issue that comes into your, your community with, say, a development or anything like that, we can, this can be applied to that, so.
Do you guys get a Respect Minnesota pledge card from the meeting?
No.
Nope.
This way, you kind of get an idea of what we're, what we're talking about there too.
So really what Respect Minnesota is, is it's a five line pledge that goes over respecting each other, respecting communities that we go into, respecting other people. And saying that even if we disagree with each other on a project or a topic of any sort, that we can come together and have a civil conversation instead of, there's been a really negative rhetoric around different projects, and it's just gotten a lot worse in the past few years. So Respect Minnesota is a pledge to say, it's okay if we disagree, but let's be civil to each other. We have a video that goes over it, I think it does a pretty good job of explaining it, so I'll just bring that up.
Minnesotans are passionate about the history and natural resources of their state, and leading a great state for future generations. Minnesotans are also passionate about the discussion taking place around the replacement of Line 3 and other major infrastructure projects. Respect Minnesota is a coalition whose mission is to create a broader community view, to bring people together, and ensure that all citizens of Minnesota will be respected during the process. Because we know that working together to find common ground is a more productive and respectful way to treat each other. Respect Minnesota supporters vow to take the following pledge. I support free speech and a safe environment for everyone. I will listen, be inclusive, and look for common ground. I will respect others, our natural environment, and local communities. I will respect the cultural heritage and history of indigenous people. I will be accountable for my words and actions and abide by the law. Join us, let's move forward together in this effort to make Minnesota a better place.
So that does a pretty good job of explaining it. It mentions Line 3, which is, full disclosure, really where this was born out of, is the pipeline replacement project taking place in northern Minnesota. And we know that this doesn't, isn't a direct issue in your community. But we were talking to people at the St. Paul Chamber, and they're like, oh, this could be used with our light rail project going on down here. And then we were talking to Mayor of Hibby, and then he was saying, oh, this could be used with the discussion of mines up here. So really, Respect Minnesota, the pledge can be applied against many projects, a ton of topics. But Line 3 is where it was born.
Yeah, and if you look at the, the five points on this, it's not asking you to be for or against anything. We're just trying to find out where we can find common ground for one another. We were just recently at the St. Cloud Chamber, and they have some issues up there as well, within businesses. And this is another way of them trying to find common ground, you know, where you have cultural differences as well, so. And like again, we talked about how, where it started at, you know, and this is, this is actually a picture of our first meeting that we went to with the members last winter, so, and get them on board and get their feedback on, on, on the project itself, so. So, and those are, those are different parts of the state that we've moved on to, so you can show, see that we've tried to cover as much of the state as possible. Because even though, you know, you don't think that this is going to affect your community, but we have members that live here that go work on those projects. I mean, even like myself, I live in Watkins, just up the road from here. And I do a lot of work in business in St. Cloud. So how these projects move along is how I make my living, and in turn, how I spend my money back in those, in those communities. So indirectly, that does get, your community will get, get affected by this, so.
Right. So those were just the union halls that we went to. We've talked to a lot of city governments. We have quite a few that have signed on and become a Respect Minnesota city. And as of this week, we got banners that you can put up on light posts, so. We'll go over the ones that signed on later, but they're starting to hang up their light post banners, so when people come into their city, they, they know that this is a Respect Minnesota city, and they have to abide by the law, and they have to, they're going into a business, they have to be respectful, and abide by the pledge.
Plus those banners, we like to have them to be able to start the conversation too. Why is, what's that banner about? So that helps the people in the community stay engaged with this as well, so.
Talked to chambers of commerce, Montra's is up there, look at that. And then we also have Respect Minnesota toolkits that we put together. I brought a few copies here. We have different ones for local governments, chambers, unions, and businesses. The local government just goes over what Respect Minnesota is and how a government can get more involved in the pledge. The main thing in here would be passing a city resolution. Unfortunately, I only have two copies of these, but-
I can make copies and get them all to everybody.
Oh, that'd be great, thank you.
So that's, that's kind of what, what we're looking for from you as city council members is, if you guys decide to become a, a Respect city, and, and you guys pass a resolution to become a Respect city, then, you know, we can, we can help you with getting those banners and the advertisement for that. And then what we'd like to do then is move, you know, move forward, moving forward in your community with the chamber and businesses as well. So that's how we get this to grow in the communities through that.
So these are just a few of the people that we've had sign up and take the Respect Minnesota pledge. You can see the Minnesota chambers up there, and we've got quite a few cities up there. Red Lake County just signed on, and quite a few businesses as well. Then we also have individual pledge signers, people can go online and sign the pledge online, or they can pass out those pledge cards. So we already have 2,500 people that have individually signed on. And we've just gotten these from going to meetings like this, talking to union members at their monthly meetings, and walking into a coffee shop, meeting someone, and saying, this is what I'm working on, it's a really cool pledge, and them signing up. So that's how we've gotten to that number, which is something, which is really cool, because this has just grown from the ground up. Like we discovered you at MCC, and so we've just been talking to people, and they say, oh, you know who you should talk to is this? And they say, you know who you should talk to is your next door neighbor, so that's how it's grown.
And that's, and that's kind of what we, we like to project out a 30 day, 60 day, 90 day plan, where we're going to be at with this project, so that's what keeps us outgoing, is by the referrals from you guys. And, you know, hopefully we can just get this, just start spreading on its own as well, you know. If you're, if you guys have somebody in your community that wants to be a champion for respect and wants to help, help us make it grow in here, because it's just me and Aaron right now doing this, so we've got a lot of air miles to cover here, so we've been, we've been running the wheels off, so.
And we have one more video, when we were going around last March and talking at union halls, we just got a few voices of people that signed the pledge, we can really catch them in a while, that's a cool video.
I support free speech and a safe environment for everyone.
I will listen and be inclusive.
And I will look for common ground.
I will respect others.
Our natural environment.
And local communities.
I will respect the culture, history, and heritage of indigenous people.
I will be accountable for my words and actions and abide by the law.
Let's move forward together.
Let's respect Minnesota.
So in that video, you can see that we, we've, we tried to include the local businesses as well as the people that are out there doing these projects too, so. And it just seems like we just had, everybody was in agreement that this is a positive thing to have in their communities, so.
So that's all we have, we really appreciate the time and allowing us to come in here and talk to you.
Any questions for us?
Thank you for making the trip, and it sounds like great.
Yeah, if the city passes a resolution for this, Joe, does every member have to sign a pledge card?
Well, if you want, yeah. The individual fledging is, is, we'll add that to the, to our, our tally.
Total number.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You can also do it online, you don't have to necessarily fill out the card.
Yep, respectminnesota.org is the easier way to do it. That way we don't have to come back and try and collect pledge cards, so. And I think our goal here is, once this really gets moving, you know, the pipe company is wanting to endorse it, but we told them to just kind of hold off, we want to, we want to do this on our own. Because the optics of it, you know, the opposition will be saying, well, you're just, it's just another campaign play on their behalf, which it's not, it's from us. And, you know, eventually, we can, you know, show the governor that, you know, these are people who are supporting this project in a, in a safe and civil manner. And that's what we want, you know. Because there's, I've been on some projects when I was still in the field where people that were against projects were coming out on the right away, and you have blind spots in that equipment, and you don't want to hurt somebody. You know, and that would just be, you know, it wouldn't be good for anyone, so, but.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care, keep it there. Thanks, Joe.
You bet, thanks for inviting us, huh? Appreciate it.
Are you going to do a presentation like this for like the state legislature, or?
We've already, we've already-
Or Congress?
We've already talked to some, some of the politicians on this. So at some point, we'd like to, we'd like to get a group of them together, and if we can get them in a room without killing each other. The direct result of this project, right? So, and, and there are, there are a lot of them that are, that have talked, we've talked to that are supportive of this. And I guess our, our, we're looking at timing, you know, when will we, when will be a good time to meet with them, and, and, so.
Is there like a membership fee or anything to sign on?
No. Nope, it's just a matter of, and, and if you looked on the pledge cards, there's a, there's a box there if you wanted to have an individual lawn sign, you know, we send those out as well. And it's the same as, as the banners. The banners though are only, you know, for the cities, you know, as far as if they do a resolution in that, in that way. But otherwise, individual yard signs, and then we have the queens.
Yeah, we have window queens.
Window queens you can do. So right now, we're kind of at a no budget level with just the members and the people that are involved with it. But, and that's one of the things too with, with Enbridge wanting to get in, on board with us to help us with it. But right now, we're just kind of pumping the brakes a little bit on that, so. But once we get going on this, and we can really get out there to advertise, then they'll come on board and help us with it, so.
Who pays your wages now then?
Actually, the members do. I'm, I'm paid by the members, being a, being a representative for the international, so. So it's, they're, they got skin in the game on it. And that's why with me helping on projects, like just last week, I was out in South Dakota on a different pipeline project, I was at hearings for that, and that's the kind of stuff that I do, so.
The members have been really supportive, we'll go to member meetings and we'll just say, oh my gosh, we need this, we need something like this.
And if any of you guys had- And if any of you guys have any questions, this is, my, uh, email address is on there and my phone number, so if you guys do want to, uh, contact me, feel free to. And, uh, we'll ask any more questions, and, and then too, as far as if you do plan on doing the resolution, um, email it to me. Okay? Yeah, that'll be fine. So that's kinda what we've done in the past with the other people, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
A question on a chamber, Joe.
Yeah, and then whenever, whenever you guys wanna do that, we will definitely, uh, we'll come back. So it's a close one.
Play a lunch, too.
That'll be awesome.
Joe, here's a couple of...
Being impressive.
Thank you so much.
Won't charge you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, everybody.
Have a good one.
Do you, what, do you think you want me to prepare a presentation for that?
I haven't finished it, you guys?
Yeah. And I'll get something ready.
All right, we went on. Um, under other, anybody got anything? I was just asking Deb earlier about, um, what the updates are on the prisoners, they had a meeting today, right?
No, we had a meeting last week, and they are, um, still very interested in, in developing that. Um, we're going to be, we could probably feel any better, but we have to do sewer testing out there and some water testing, um, but they're trying to decide who's gonna pay for that, so.
And if we end up doing it, whoever we sell will end up paying for it anyway. There's a water, there's a leak out there in the water system somewhere. And the way we can find it and start isolating...
Sections and pressure testing, yeah.
We never did get a quote back, right?
No.
Yeah.
No, I didn't know anything from that.
Thank you, cause Emerson's my mom.
Emerson's been done since the year. They seeded it and backfilled everything, so I'll see.
Did they get up to Feden Hills?
I had two, two different companies out there.
Oh, could I take care of it?
No. Nobody will bid it.
Huh?
Nobody will bid it.
Oh, I thought you were gonna run ahead with the...
I did, but nobody wants to do it. 'Cause, uh, if you go out there, the, uh, storm sewer line cut the top off because it was too tall, and put the curb and everything on top of it, and that's where it's leaking, wherever that seam is. So I had, the last guy that was out there injects a plastic around the outside, a rubber molding, to seal it all, waiting on his bid. And then somebody will come in and take the blacktop. They're gonna do it all from inside.
There's a leaking water line out there?
No, storm sewer. And the street's sinking away, and the yard is sinking away. We keep filling it in, but it keeps going away, and that's gonna be the only way to fix it, is to seal it. And then a company will come in, tear the blacktop out, we blacktop.
Did you notify those people out there?
No, I'm waiting for that quote yet.
Oh, okay.
That I can, uh, bring to you guys, and you guys can make a decision. And then we'll let, we'll let them know if there was going on.
No, I only told them what you told me.
Right, I told them...
What we done after Emerson.
Yeah, I told them, we tried to get it at the same time, and we had two people out there the last couple weeks, and the last two are waiting on it. Sean could've filled in on that too, 'cause they're involved.
'Cause, you know, that's a safety hazard too, you know, as well, with school kids and all of the buses.
We, we keep, we keep an eye on it and stuff, so it's not gonna fall away. We keep filling it in. But it is a problem.
Ben Heidi and I were out today doing code enforcement, we drove on Emerson, it really turned out nice. Somebody's got a trailer parked around the side of the road that we're gonna check tomorrow again, see if it's still there, because someone's gonna run into it, but hey.
Three forty's left.
Yeah.
Oh, on Emerson already, so.
Yes.
There's only like three houses on that part of the road, so take your pick.
Well, plus, we still have the ongoing issue of engineering costs being more than what we were paying before, and now further, further compounded with lack of response, it's not getting any better, right?
Mm-hmm. I just has been contacting him for different things, and he doesn't get back to us, and I contact him, and then he kinda gets back, yeah.
And that'll have a problem. I always get rid of that too.
Maybe we need something, ask Wayne.
Wait, so we do, we say Wayne, contact him, so then Wayne does.
I got a late notice last week in the mail from them, saying that we hadn't paid our invoice, so I called them, and said, "I'd love to pay you, but I don't have any invoices to pay. Maybe you need to talk to Sean and have him send them to me." So then about an hour or two later, they came through the, the email to me. So I'm not even getting my invoices. I'm getting a late notice.
What do you get in a late notice?
I don't pay off of the statements or late notices I have, I only pay off invoices.
Right.
Because it's, these late notices that come, a late notice that comes, their statement looks like this, so I don't pay off of it.
Is that the first one that you've received from them, or?
No, I received no ones before.
'Cause he, he doesn't give us the bills, when he does, he gets us some once at a time.
In October, the end of, let's see. Where am I? We're in October now. So in the middle of September, end of September, 'cause I'd already done the end-of-the-month bills, I finally got the bills for July and August, which was after I did my end-of-the-month September billing, which I think I did around the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, 'cause it was a short month. So I did my, I had, like, they had to wait then until the October council meeting, because that's, I only do them places a month. So then I got a late notice saying that I hadn't paid them, well, I looked on there and I thought, "Oh, this is from there, from those bills." Well, I got one then back in, in September saying I hadn't paid it, and I sent an email in and said, "Can I get the, the invoices, please? I'm getting a statement saying I'm late. Can I get the e, the state, the, um, invoices?" "Oh, yeah." So he sends them to me. Well, then I got this one that said I didn't pay again, so this time I called this person and I said, "You know, I'd love to pay them, and we usually pay our bills on time, but if I don't have them, I can't pay them." She goes, "Oh." And I got them like an hour or two later, he finally sent them over.
It's funny that they don't come from accounts payable.
Um, Sean emails them, so I think what they do is they make them up, and then he reviews them, and he emails them to his law. He doesn't get them reviewed, because, um, when they come, they're dated like August and September, but I get them in...
October.
And the other thing is, um, so back in August, I'm not sure if he did six grading certificates or twelve, because it's on here twice, two different, well, this Gary Bjorklund, it says, "File six lot certificates and review," and then it says, "Review, gather plans, file six certs against grading plans." So I'm not sure if it's the same six, or if he really did twelve. But in any case, they charged us eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and forty cents.
And we're losing money, because we're charging on building permits for that.
One of the last ones that Justin did for us back in December, he charged us three-hundred dollars for eleven of them. So they are more than double what we were getting charged before. I don't know what they're doing, along with the fact that we also get charged for his travel time to come out and look at it, and for the mileage, for them to drive out here.
So we're, we're losing money from what we're charging them with?
Yeah, 'cause we went from sixty dollars or seventy, whatever, we used to charge us seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yeah.
We went to a hundred-and-twenty-five, thinking we'd cover it, and even...
And you're close.
No, I mean, even if you take twelve at a hundred-and-twenty-five, we're not, that's not eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, so we're not even getting enough money to cover it. So I don't know what we wanna do with them.
We just wanted you to know when the budget's way over budget, that it's this type of thing.
Well, these, this is actually set up in a general ledger account, so that the money comes in off of the banks, off of the building permits, it goes into a general ledger account, 'cause it's just an in and out. So we really don't even, you know, but we're gonna end up being short in this account at some point, because he's charging us more than what we're taking in. I don't know why it takes him so long to do a grading certificate, or what's so hard about it. But I decided I'd let you know that, that's getting pretty spendy for just the, the grading certificates.
Question is, is how much longer are we gonna just keep paying more money before we take some action?
That's something you guys have to discuss and decide.
Seems like wasteful spending to me.
Pardon?
It's just, it just seems like wasteful spending when we're giving, not as great a service and spending more.
Yeah.
Well, agreed, and I, didn't we bring this up like three, four months ago? Aren't we gonna take some action at that time? And then the email came and said, "No, let's not take action, let's not talk to Sean, let's not do this, let's not do that," but here we are.
I wanna correct you on that. My email said that I didn't wanna do it at a public meeting, 'cause I don't think that's the place to take it.
Right, no, then we said that we would meet separately with them.
Personnel committee.
Mm-hmm. But then that didn't happen, because didn't, they didn't want to, so.
They didn't want to?
Correct. There was emails back and forth that, that was not going to move forward.
That Wink didn't wanna sit down with us?
No, we didn't even reach out to Wink. So. And then we talked about going off with the RFPs, and nobody wanted to do that. Everybody just wanted to roll back onto Justin, and even our attorney said, "Well, that wasn't even really a good choice to do that," so, um...
Well, he didn't really say that either.
Well, he kinda did.
Yeah, she did, he said.
Well, he said, "You can go back to them," he said, "Absolutely, we can do whatever we wanna do."
He said, "Why would you go back to them when you had problems there, now you gotta do when you got problems there?"
He never said that.
Why keep them?
He sure did. Some video. Secondly, I mean, if, if there's a problem with Sean, then we need to address Sean, and I think it was even said that if Sean is the problem, look at a different, um, engineer within that firm, because nobody wanted to go out for RFPs, because it's too much work to do that.
But their costing is still gonna be the same, and who walks in the door, right?
Well, is it? I mean, because Sean is not getting back to us, and maybe, right...
No, I'm talking about the example that Wendy brought up.
Sure.
That's not that changed.
This isn't Sean, this is Gary Bjorklund doing it. Whoever Gary Bjorklund. Well, then, if, I mean, if we're not happy with this engineer, then we need to do an RFP and go out and find a different engineer.
That's right.
But, I mean, that's what we need to do.
That's the fairest way to do it.
I mean...
Then you're gonna be, then you're gonna be getting quotes from Bob's Engineering Company, and they're not gonna be proficient at the job, and you're gonna wind up with bigger headaches.
Well, that is very po, anything's possible, but the last discussion and emails that was said, um, nobody wanted to then bring back Justin due to respect for, um, Justin because of the issues that he could...
We're not even talking about Justin, we're talking about Boltman Mink.
Right, we're talking about engineers in general, and if we wanna go out for an RFP, then that's what we need to do. Let's make that decision and do it. It's, I mean, if, if we're not happy with Wink right now, then we need to do something, which we should've done three months ago, six months ago, or whatever, but we just keep dragging it on. So do we wanna go out for an RFP and find a new engineer or not?
That would be the best way.
It's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a waste of money and time, 'cause you're not...
Okay, so then what do you wanna do?
Why would it cost money to us? It don't cost money to us.
It costs money to them, and then they have, they don't...
You shouldn't worry about them.
You asked me, now let me answer the question.
You shouldn't worry about them.
So what, what do you suggest?
That's not our expense.
Remember, we're taking a pledge to respect.
I didn't say it was. I'm talking about the waste of time on our part. The expense is gonna, the expense is gonna be financial and time on their part, right? And you're not gonna have, I mean, if...
We're, we're still gonna have time and money on our part, though, too. I mean, we're gonna be pulling these RFPs, and city staff here is gonna be reviewing them, so that's taking time out of their day when they should be doing other stuffs, and now they're gonna have to be putting extra time in. They're gonna be prepared. But having some of that time... But it, here, here it comes back to our respect pledge, though, too, um, and coming, coming down to, that's costing the city taxpayers more dollars, though, too, correct? Is, because now they're, now, now they've got more, more stuff that they're trying to put through, um, so.
So then, my question is, are you guys wanting to just go back to Boltman Mink and go with Justin?
I mean, in my exposure, leading Minnesota cities and the places I've gone, people I've talked to, Boltman Mink is a highly respected engineering company. They are like the primo engineering company. They probably, I don't know what the percentage of cities they're engineering company for, but it's gotta be a high percentage. So, you know, why are we screwing around and going out for RFPs? Why don't we just, we already have, we know them, right? And even if, even if Justin's not our guy, which apparently no, nobody wants him back, um, he's got the knowledge, so whoever the engineer that's assigned to the city of Montrose is can always go back to Justin and ask a question.
Mm-hmm.
We're not gonna have that with Bob's Engineering Company. They're gonna be starting from scratch, just like Wink did when they came in here.
Right, but I don't, what I'm saying, though, is my understanding is, is the last emails that went through was...
We were gonna work with Wink and...
Well, we were gonna talk to Wink, but then we were also going to, out of respect, is not bring Justin back. I believe that's how it was worded, is there was too much respect from city staff to not bring Justin back into the city because of...
Into a hostile, whatever, more or less what it was described. I think it wasn't about not bringing Boltman Mink back, it was just that out of respect for Justin and, and his sanity, and...
And he, and he still helps us quite a bit, and he's, he...
He's still sharing information with us, even though he's not.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that right there, I mean, that, that shows, um, to me, shows, shows a person that still has a caring for our community.
He's got integrity.
Oh, absolutely does.
Yeah, and integrity, I mean, you've got someone who's not a representative for you, not working for you, but he's saying, "Hey, here's some paperwork that you guys can fill up, and you'll potentially get some more free money." I, I mean, I look at that as a stand-up person, no matter, you know, where they're coming from, and, so.
I sent him an email yes, on Friday, or Thursday, and asked him, um, "Since we are the ones who put the bump marks in on Highway Twelve, whose stop sign is that? Ours or..." He said, "'Cause I don't even know where to look to figure it out." He sent me one back that said, "Nope, it's Mid-Its, and I have to talk to so-and-so, so I'll just tell him to come out and fix your stop sign too." I mean, I, he's, I, I send him emails all the time, 'cause he, he gets back to me at least.
The last time we, we took a vote on this, it failed three-two. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to, uh, put up for a vote again.
We can't do that in workshop, can we? This is, oh, this is special secret.
Why don't we put it on the agenda for the next meeting? This here should've been a workshop, anyway. I, I know, Deb, you're really good at switching at the councils, and that was...
That wasn't true. That's true, because we had, you could change orders immediately. Sean changed it. Yes, that was up to Sean to do that.
I would be very careful.
And you would've had time to change it to seven o'clock at night, too.
You have, you voted to make the workshops at three-thirty. You voted for that.
This is not a workshop.
It was, it originally was a workshop, but because Sean needed...
Yeah, but it got changed, so that stuff can be decided on.
Well, because it was an emergency situation that Sean needed to take care of. It had to get taken care of. That's the only reason it was changed.
And that's the only thing we should be talking about. And that's the only thing we should be talking about. Talking about this, the engineering stuff in front of the whole community, what, what, what do you think's going to come of that? What are you, who are you trying to get here to come in and, and say Boltman Mink's the worst people in the world? You hate Boltman Mink, and I, I'm not exactly sure why. I've heard Michelle's concerns, I understand them, but half the time, I can't, nobody gets a straight answer out of you, why you don't like Boltman Mink. Michelle gives us a straight answer. Because when I went door to door and talked to people, they said, well, will you get rid of Boltman Mink? They're just ripping the city open.
I, I did that too.
Like that people out there at the park, charges sixty-eight thousand dollars and then when they needed him, he wasn't well.
I went talking.
We're back on the thing of whether or not you're allowed to go on vacation as a working adult. Well, you don't you think somebody should have covered for them? He wasn't on vacation, the person that was supposed to be there.
We're talking about one instance here, right? I went and talked, I went and talked to eight hundred and some homes in this community also, and not one time did the topic of an engineering company come up.
No, because we had switched. Cause we had switched already.
But the topic of conversation didn't even come up with anybody. It's not something that the average guy that drives off to the cities and works all day and comes home with his kids is concerned about in the community. Spending more money we need to is a concern.
I think the right thing to do then is to talk to Wink and with Sean and let them know that there is consideration of, um, potentially going back to Boltman Mink. I mean, we, that's something that we deserve, we should do for Sean, I believe. We don't just drop somebody. Um, and just say, you know, with the concerns or whatever that we've had, then, you know, um, the city council's looking at going back to Boltman Mink as our city engineer.
If that's the route, we want to go with it, then we need to kind of fast stream that, because the preserve is a big project.
Mm-hmm.
And when I was sitting in that meeting, there's going to be a lot of different things that are going to be moving parts that we're going to have to handle. There were questions that they had that Sean really didn't have the answer to.
Right.
And he said, well, I'm going to have to look back to all our old files on all of this stuff. And Wendy actually answered more questions than, than Sean.
Well, I mean.
She's been around here for, you know, a long time.
Well, if we, if we need to do that, just be prepared that, um, you're going to be asking them then to reduce their fee. I don't know if that's something that they're going to be willing to do, so.
Asking Sean to reduce his fee?
Mm-hmm.
Why would we be doing that?
Cause they're paying so much more.
So.
Well, no, I'm saying, I think I respectfully would reach out to Sean, because it, from what I'm getting from everybody, not everybody, from the, the majority here is to go back to Boltman Mink. So I'm thinking out of respect for Sean and Wink, that we reach out to them and tell them, due to their higher costs and, you know, um, the lack of Sean getting back to us on multiple occasions, since we have had his boss here twice, I believe, Deb, right? At least that.
He's been here one time that I've been here. He's here once before, Deb.
Yes, yeah. So, I mean, we've talked to him a couple of times and we're not seeing an improvement, so the council has chosen to go a different direction. Okay? Right?
And who wants to talk to Sean? Who wants to be in that meeting? Or what do you want me to do?
I, I can happily go. I was in the other two meetings, so I don't have a problem going back and talking to him.
So you're suggesting just a cursy call, saying basically, all right, we're.
We're done.
We're going to be done with you guys. Finish your twenty-five project and.
Pretty much. I mean, we've given him multiple chances. We've, we've reached out to him more than once and we've had meetings with his boss, so we've got to do, we've got to move on. We've got too many things coming up. We've got the preserves coming up, we've got the project coming here in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. Plus we've got.
Push out, too.
Well, and we've got the whole project that's going in within the city in twenty-twenty-one as well, so.
And we've got a bunch of the streets.
Yeah, so we need to just go ahead. And everybody knows my feelings on Justin. If Justin would have sided here when we went out for RFPs, it probably would have been totally different.
Tom, I actually talked at the regional meeting to the gentleman that came, Jared, and he came because Justin didn't want to get beat up again. That's why he didn't come.
Oh, I know.
He told us that.
I talked to Boltman.
Well, if he was so good, why would you worry about being, getting beat up?
Well, because he, we know darn well he's going to get beat up. Wait, I mean, that's, that's just the history.
Because you get to a point where you've had enough.
So, I mean, I, the last couple, um, conferences I've been to as well, I've talked to Boltman Mink, saying, you know, Justin was a great. He, he did what he did, but my only concern was what we addressed with him, so, um, but we have to move forward.
So we're going to tell Sean this? Are we going to make a motion and vote on going with Boltman Mink, or we just could tell him we're doing this?
Just leave it open right now. Just, just talk to Sean first.
Well, we have to do something.
Talk to Sean first. You're saying if we can get a different person other than, if we want a different engineer than Justin?
You know what? I'm, I'm absolutely okay with Justin coming back.
I don't know if he will though, cause I think he's taken on more other cities, so I don't know if he would be able to come back, but they've got other engineers.
That too, and, and he's always been here to help us, if we needed it, so.
The resources.
They have a big, yeah, they have other engineers, I don't know if we would.
Just as long as they're not the guy that didn't have no personality.
I think he's got. I'm just saying. The guy that came?
Yes, he just kind of sat there and.
Doesn't he do Big Lake now?
He lives with the city of Big Lake.
I think he was, he's probably growing more into his role now.
I would just like to make a motion that we switch back to Boltman Mink as of first of the year.
I mean, I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? So January first?
Well, I think that's probably a pretty good date. I don't think much is going to happen at the preserve.
Is that going to happen, all your regards, to what happens when I talk to Sean?
Well, I, I, I think so, because like you said, I mean, how many times have you reached out to Sean since our last discussion, three, four months ago? And he doesn't get back to you?
They're not going to cut their prices just to accommodate the city of Matos.
Right, and then, you know, we're, like Wendy just said, we're getting late notices for a bill we haven't even received yet, so.
We, we can't be going over budget, we, uh.
Yeah.
Right.
Type ship here.
Trying. So, all right, any other discussion then? All right, Kirby.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'll vote aye. Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd?
No.
Motion passes, board of one.
Sean, do you want to do that, like, as soon as possible?
Whatever, you guys can get figured out. That's fine. Um, how's Wellhouse coming along?
It's going.
Okay, cause that's still Boltman Mink, right?
Right, they're, there's the water pipe in today.
Okay.
Hooked up to our mains, so.
Awesome.
All right, got all the park equipment here?
Yep. There's two posts that aren't, they got bells and did them up. They're going to burn them, I don't know, they got to redo the pipes. Uh, there's several that have to be replaced.
Weren't they going to build the Wellhouse up first of all?
Yeah.
Not right away.
Well, they're trying to get the, all the pipes in and the footings is full. Whether it holds out, they put the building up.